I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. Anyone in attendance is going to be speaking from the audience today. If they would please stand and take an oath. Otherwise, we'll get on with business. We have established quorum. We have no cases on today's agenda. However, we do have some items in our communications. Those will begin with what was requested from City Council previously. And one is a change in the zoning code. We also have an annexation request for us to consider. And we'll be completing our discussions and the communications today on the -- something that Kent Butler from City Council also has requested of us, and that's to look over doing ordinance for keeping of chickens. We'll begin with the changing of the zoning code. I'll read that memorandum. This was from July 22 of this year from the City Council. This is a request for a change in the zoning code. "On July 19, 2010, Athens City Council voted to recommend that Athens City Planning Commission review ACC 230401, Item B, and consider amending regulations to reduce the 100-foot setback requirement and provide clarification on whether chicken tractors are accessory structures. Please return your recommendation to determinations City Council at your earliest convenience." Most -- now we table this for the full-on chicken discussion and move on to the annexation request.
You're moving to table it?
Just momentarily. Let's just move to the annexation request.
Oh, I see.
Sorry. We're not talking chickens, and it'd be nice bookends to today's meeting.
It's actually zoning designation is what we're looking at for the annexation request?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct. I apologize. The annexation request, has that been already accepted by City Council? Or are they still considering it based on our zoning?
I believe it was approved.
Okay.
I think it was approved about, yeah, last month.
Okay. What this is, is -- go ahead.
Okay. The way I understand this is that the process of annexation, and this is accelerated annexation, and you might correct me if I'm either of you two who are more expert in it than I, is that we did approve the supplying of services for the annexation. I think that was the step that was done at council. In other words, they said they will supply fire protection, police protection, water and sewer. And that's what the council has done. I don't think they released it. The county commissions have released it yet.
I don't believe so either.
No.
But I think the request is that the Planning Commission needs to make a recommendation for the zoning prior to
Annexation.
... Athens actually physically accepting that as a portion of the new changing the borders of the city.
Historically, of course, you had, it would come in as an R1, but probably about 10 years ago, they changed it so you designate the area as it comes in. This is, right now, I believe, an R1.
Correct. I put together more detail of the surrounding zonings, more of those land surveys could be confusing it.
Thank you.
Thanks. You can see it's a large lot. It also has, especially on the western side of it, pretty steep topography. It does have road frontage both on Columbia and on Old Peach Ridge, with the Old Peach Ridge being the very steep portion on the west.
And if I remember, you told me the dark blue lines, the light blue lines are lot lines, the dark blue lines are the water lines.
Correct.
Were the considerations what council discussed, and again, was in session, was whether we had the capability of supplying water and sewer, and it appears we do. The next question was whether this could be subdivided and whether it could be done. And you look at the topography, it makes it difficult. But again, the intention, of course, is to make this residential.
There hasn't been any request yet to subdivide the property, though, correct?
There has not, no.
It's surrounded by an R1 zone.
It is surrounded by R1, all of that orange. It would, the property owner, she is requesting it so that she may build a single-family residence on it. R1 does seem, in my opinion, the correct zoning for that.
Yeah, I don't have any concern with an R1 zone there.
Okay. Okay, I would move that we designate this new annexation as a R1 zone.
All those in favor of designating this annexation request as R1?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there any further discussion that anyone would like to make on this zoning designation request?
No.
Okay. Let's get back to our chickens that are not allowed in the city yet.
Well, they are allowed in the city.
They are allowed in the city.
If you have the lot.
If it's a thousand feet from a
No, 100 feet from a lot.
I'm sorry.
1,000 feet would make it more difficult.
And that is not our business, is not to make things more difficult. Okay. I stand corrected. Thank you. Where this began was we had this request for the change in the zoning code for us to consider what a setback requirement would be and whether chicken tractors would be considered a necessary structure. I would assume with this whether any, like, building for chickens would be a necessary structure.
Well
Or is it just the mobile nature of the tractor?
I think they're discussing the mobile nature of the tractor, whether it's a chicken coop. Obviously, the code, as it's stated now, is that you have to have 100 feet from a lot line for a chicken coop. So the next question is, is a tractor or arc, whichever term you use, a chicken coop? I would probably say anything that's chicken is a chicken coop, possibly, from my interpretation. On the other hand, if we say, okay, it's mobile, therefore, it's not a necessary structure, we could probably make the same argument for a porta-john and place it anywhere in the city, which probably would be okay for many, some people, as long as it's cleaned up properly at the same time. I'm not sure if your next-door neighbor would want one of these things. Since it's mobile, it could be right up to this, and we now not include it as a necessary structure. It could be right against the lot line rather than the five-feet requirement.
Right.
So therefore, there's two things going on here. One is that, and I don't have the actual, I don't think I brought a copy of the actual code for it, 230203E, but, oh, no, sorry, 230401B, sorry. I looked at the other memorandum. But again, what you were thinking of in terms of that is whether, you know, we want to change the setback, in other words, say, okay, let's reduce that. And correct me if I'm wrong, again, if anybody's, if they have another opinion. And then at that point, whether we want to even dodge that by saying that chicken tractor is not a necessary structure.
Right.
Okay.
That's a pretty clear explanation where I would think the request is. If we consider that whether a chicken tractor would count as a necessary structure, I mean, I'm under the impression that it would. Anything that is a structure that is half sheltering, I think, has to be considered a necessary structure.
And then there's always the gray area of what's mobile. At this point in time, technology-wise, we can move whole houses.
Right, right.
So at that point, you could say, yes, it's all, every house is temporary.
Right.
I think I gave you some of the, actually, in your package, you have minutes from July 12 of 2010 from the Planning Development Commission Committee of the City Council. I just talked a little bit about the chicken issue. You also have a couple pages, it looks like, from the Mad City Chickens, which is from Madison, Wisconsin, what they have. And I think there's a couple of other surveys in here of other items, including the, let's see, I think this one is chicken laws throughout different states. And then there's a study from Missoula, Montana, I believe, that looks at chickens, residential over chicken keeping, examination of 25 cities. There's quite a bit of information for you to look at.
Yeah. And then, no, Paul, add an addition, the Seattle municipal code, that was recently amended to increase the number of chicken lot from three, I believe, to eight. Still, I mean, I know when you go through most of that, pretty much across the board, roosters aren't permitted.
Mm-hmm.
And they all seem to have some setback, which tends to vary in, from residential structure or lot line. So I think we have to consider both setbacks on this, not just from the lot line as it currently is in the code, but also from the residential structure within a property where a coop might be placed.
Are you saying something that wouldn't?
Well, you can, I guess, I wouldn't imagine you'd want to do like a lean-to structure or something that you're using as a party wall, residential structure as part of the coop, so.
That seems to be mobile. Do we understand each one from the other?
Well, again, I think, yeah, I think maybe I'm going a little bit too out there, not just focusing on this 230401, and how it's defined there. So let's ignore that last comment.
No, it's a valid point. I mean, would you want it up against your house?
So I think, I mean, is everyone in agreement that we, the Planning Commission, the present members would consider it an accessory structure, a chicken tractor?
Is that a motion?
I can make it one.
Accessory structures are permitted at five feet from lot lines. And so if we're saying that a chicken tractor is an accessory structure, then that means it's, as it would stand, it would be five feet, like a garage or a shed, five feet from the lot line. So it may be an accessory, a different type of accessory structures how we would want to address it.
You're asking whether, okay, I see what you're saying.
I believe Mr. Butler, when he had discussed it at council, his thought was that they'd be permitted at 10 feet, more or less. And so if we're just saying it's an accessory structure, that means it's
Right.
By right, five feet.
Well, okay, I would assume, my concept of this is a chicken coop is an accessory structure, and that's the accessory structure, and then within that is a subset called chicken coop, which you have to have 100-foot lot line away from it.
Correct.
In other words, the chicken coop isn't a necessary structure, the tractor is a necessary structure.
Correct.
But because it's a chicken coop, it has to be so many feet from any lot line. In other words, the general accessory structure is a five-foot setback. Garage, garden shed, tool shed.
Correct.
In there, of course, is somewhere in between is the next subset in there, a subset of accessory structures, chicken coop, which has further restrictions.
And which is already in code that
Correct.
The shelter for chickens has to be 100, the 100-foot setback.
I don't think one would preclude saying it's a necessary structure means that the chicken coop concept is nonvoid. The restrictions of a chicken coop is nonvoid.
Right.
Okay.
But you might be able to say that a chicken tractor is different than a chicken coop.
Do chickens reside in there and do they lay eggs?
I'm just advocating
I mean, I think you could call it
To make sure that we're clear on definitions. Where do we want chicken coops? Where do we want chicken tractors?
Well, and I think it's, again, I don't have that ordinance in front of me, but I think it's defined much vaguer, more vague in both than it, than being described as a chicken coop or a chicken tractor. I think it's
I think it just says chicken coop.
It does.
Yeah.
Does it?
It doesn't say what a coop is.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Right. So I think with, when we are looking at that item that, which includes the 100-foot setback, I think we also want to include, you know, a better, more holistic definition of the chicken coop.
Procedure-wise, we have two diff, as you say, we have two different things here. One is reducing the 100-foot setback. The other one is, of course, is the definition of a chicken tractor. Definition-wise, procedure, okay, procedure-wise, do we require public hearings for either one? Would we require public hearings for either one? A definition, I don't know how much we want to
I don't think definition, I think it's, with changing the setback's probably going to require a public hearing.
Okay.
And like I said, and I wouldn't, if we're going to consider that dimension on the setback, I'd also want to add to that dimension from a residential structure as well. I know that was something I saw in Seattle's code, I was reviewing last night, I had that, so.
The plan, Paul Ogb, pointed out that as the code sets now, if you have 100 foot from any setback, there's no limitation to how many chickens you can put in that coop. In other words, if you have the space, you could do that. There's no limitation on roosters or any of the other points brought up by Member Butler in that sense. Again, that's why I put the Planning Development Minutes are instructive at least. What are the conditions?
Right.
If we're going to change something like that, we want to make sure we don't end up with 100 chickens in a small field.
100 chickens just around this 25-foot border.
Well, if you have a lot, you can start your farm. The Seattle one, of course, I see has
Yeah, they're going all the way.
Yeah, they've got the pigs, they've got
They're back to the future, is how I like to
Back to the future. Okay.
If I may, I don't know if the location of the coop or tractor is so much the issue as to how much free range do the chickens have in their rear yard. Calls that I've gotten aren't in relation to where the coop is. It's in relation to their chickens coming up to the property line. So even if we put it five feet, 10 feet, 100 feet, are the chickens still allowed to walk up to the property line? That's the bigger issue, I think, than where the actual coop is sitting. And do we then say, all right, the defined chicken area or pen in the coop has to be within that defined area, and that pen area has to be so many feet from the property line?
What does the law say about unleashed animals? I think the only unleashed animal out there is a cat.
They wouldn't be unleashed if, I'm saying, if you have a fenced yard, they're still in your rear yard, but they're still able to come up to the property line, because the fence is allowed to be on the property line. So are we saying, all right, your coop can go in the middle of your yard, but the chickens are still allowed to roam up to the edge of the property line? Or are we going to say the chickens are restricted to 10 feet from the property line, or wherever they be, including the coop? I don't, coop, tractor, whatever we want to call it, enclosure.
Yeah.
Any, because something mobile, be sort of like an RV, you know, I mean, it can move around from place to place as well every day. So I think we need to, what I've heard and what I've studied and read is the actual distance from the chicken to the property line and not so much its enclosure.
Okay.
As to what we need to come up with an answer to.
That's how it's written right now in code. It's, you can keep, keeping a fowl or farm animals is permitted in a building at least 100 feet distance from every lot line.
Yes, I thought it was just
Yeah. So it's
Okay. I missed it here.
The way the code is read now is that the, your domestic, your animal must be kept within a building.
I see, it's after the
Three, four, five, six.
I see. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, it defines except in a building.
Yeah, the sort of animals at large, I don't know if that's where you would want to amend something like that on where, what their range is within a lot.
Which section is that?
Well, if you, I think I'm maybe looking at the same page, that, one that sort of pulled out
You probably didn't get the packet, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a, under Title 23, I think it's Section 9
No, actually, it's Title 9.
Oh, Title, I'm sorry, Title 9, 111 is animals at large. And it sort of defines what the range or not range is, I guess.
And again, that really just covers animals outside your, as John pointed out, outside your property, but you'd have to amend that to add
Yeah, that's what I
Inside the property.
I think you'd want to define something like that. I mean, I think what we need to also determine is how, I guess, what approach we want to take on this. Is, you know, the amending these individual ones to fit something that we can agree on, or is it, you know, do we want to consider it at a much larger scale, like, for example, looking at the Seattle one, which is much more, you know, talking about urban agriculture, other farm animals. I guess, do we want to be specific and just look at the chicken, what the council request was, which is pretty much our tractors, accessory structures, or, and do they count towards that 100-foot setback? And if they do count towards the 100-foot setback, can that be reduced?
From my point of view, I, this is going to, there's quite a bit of information out there, and there's going to be quite a bit of discussion, I'm sure. I would look at just addressing the recommendations as they stand now, the requests from council.
I think that's what my feeling is as well, to just, I guess, keep moving forward. It was a request by City Council, and I think I want to show due diligence towards them as well on what the request was, rather than going into a much broader discussion that would take much longer, I think, than they're wanting from us. So that's my take as well. Harry, if you had any comment?
Looking at some of these other regulations, they have some that say they're not allowed to roam free within the yard, some that have a specific duration, so it's more, I think about 4H. You can have these chickens for eight weeks, you know, kind of thing. But, yeah, it ranges from 10 to 100 feet to not allowed at all.
Well, I think what I, what I mentioned is, I just want us to, when we look at the recommendations for, that City Council has asked us to make, and if we propose an amendment or change to those that we sort of, I think Paul Ogb's really good at reminding us of kind of following suit. Okay, where does that lead us next on, if we say this, what does that mean? Like, what John brought up as far as what their range would be. And I think we do have to look at those other ones, but again, we'll keep it focused towards just the keeping of chickens or domestic fowl. However, that, or not caged birds, I don't, it's the vague description there. And caged birds would imply that they're not for range.
I think if you're going to make recommendations that follow suit with what council's requesting, if there's other issues that the Planning Commission thinks should be addressed, even if they're outside of the zoning code permitting an education practice for anybody who wants to keep chickens, things like that.
Yeah.
I would suggest you make those recommendations as part of it.
Yeah, I mean, you did see on a lot of those
The size of the coop, I think. Is there a best practice for the amount of space a chicken should have to be
There is, I understand.
Happy, you know? If we don't, we should address those as well, I would think.
Okay. No, I, I think you're definitely, you're definitely right. And like I said, I know you would, you would be on our case if we did it, so. I mean, how do we, going forward now, I mean, I don't know if we want to take a step back, go through the material that's been generously provided to us, and start to kind of pick it apart that way, once we have a little bit more background with what we're going to be discussing.
I think we
Where we could, I know everyone's got opinions now, but I want to maybe just hold back a little bit.
Okay. Do you want to reply to council?
That sounds good. I think that, yeah, I mean, I think we should respond back that we're going to be, we will consider this request for changing the zoning code. I don't see us, I mean, I think we have to do something, whether it's, we're allowing chickens or we're not. Right now, it's not clear.
We allow chickens, remember that. We allow chickens. As it stands now, you can have a chicken.
Well, I think we're going to, okay, strike that, sure. Sure. And we'll at least have something on chicken tractor.
Okay.
Paul and I were just discussing, what if Councilman Butler actually came in with the request of how he wants it rewritten?
He provided us quite a bit of guidance.
Yeah, I think
It's in this minute.
Yeah, I saw, I watched that. But actually, Paul, you know, the changes and strikes and distances and definitions and, instead of us sitting here trying to totally write the new amendment, maybe have him do it. And, okay, what do you want?
Yeah, I mean, I think the key one is he wants the abolition of the 100-foot setback for keeping livestock and to clarify what farm animals are permitted within the city limits. So I don't know if that's just naming species or something along those lines. And then again, that's really all in that, that single 230401B, where it discusses the domestic, keeping of domestic animals and the 100-foot setback.
From my point of view, I think we should just tell them we're looking at it and go from there.
Timeline-wise, I mean, I think it all depends on what our caseload is as well, but I would think we probably will come to something this year, but All right, we'll give a response.
Okay.
I make a motion to table discussion until further review of the documentation. We can, I don't know what's, what we, do you know if there are any cases coming up in the foreseeable future that you're aware of, Paul, John?
Nothing major. There may be one or two, but possible PUD coming up.
Considering most, I'll second the motion. But the same discussion would be, of course, considering that if we do move on it, we should think about a public hearing eventually. And I think that's usually a 30-day window, I believe, or something.
Would you like a public hearing prior to us drafting a recommendation, or do you feel like we probably should have a draft in hand?
I think you should have a draft.
Okay.
What do you think?
I guess it's how much, how much range of input do we want?
We should have something proposed so the public can react to it.
They'll react to something anyway, though.
See, I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking on this one. You don't even need to have that draft in place.
Well, I keep trying to get the message out. We're talking chickens, and people out there need to let us know how they feel about
Okay.
Changing the
Their favorite.
Well, let's pencil this in for our next meeting in September. I think we have a couple of weeks in between, so we will have a little more time to prepare something. And we'll try to hammer out a draft or get close to something that we can prepare draft in the coming meeting or so.
If there's any analysis you guys would like from us, you know, about where, based upon 10-foot, 25-foot, et cetera, how that would impact residences, please just send me an email or call me.
Yeah. I mean, I think something off the top of my head right now that, that seems like it'd be useful is, is kind of the key ones. If you could sort of provide us the range, okay, what are setbacks for structures, the range that you've seen? And it could be, they're probably all here in this packet, it's just kind of providing us a, pretty easy to look at chart.
As Paul said, it's all over the place. I did a research of just every major city in Ohio, and it's from 5-foot to 100-foot to one per acre to not allowed at all.
I mean, I think, obviously, there's going to be that, that sort of range. And I mean, maybe you could even just stick at the, stick with the ones that, you know, Kent had provided as examples, since, you know, he's the one that's making this request. I would assume he's giving examples of ones that he, you know, you know, appreciates or would like to see us sort of follow suit on. And then, you know, your concern about whether, you know, free range, do they have to be caged all the time, or those sort of conditions. I think just assuming, see that, that's going to be easy for us to not have to go back through this if we're going to need to reference at the next meeting or so when we're doing the draft to be helpful.
The thing I thought was interesting is most of these that I pulled up, and even some of the cities are mentioned here, is you're only allowed having them if you were to sell them within a certain period of time. So, again, for the 4H type stuff, where you're getting rid of them, not to, not for sustainability, but actually to raise and sell. And that was probably 60% of the cities that I researched were that way as to what the requirements were, if you were allowed to have them, you had to get rid of them in a certain period of time. So I thought that was interesting.
Okay. One of the other things, if you're going to look at issues, and I think I've mentioned to Paul Ogb while, is that we're talking about accessory structures, and we, and the previous meeting, we talked about lot coverage, 60% lot coverage. I assume this is part of the lot coverage, but realized that at the thrust of the reason why we're doing lot coverage is because we're trying to eventually craft a stormwater management plan, runoff management plan, which means that this plan, runoff management plan, which means at this point, if I understand the concept of stormwater management plan is that we're supposed to prevent pollution from getting into our Hocking River.
Correct.
With that point of view is, do we, are there issues out there in terms of runoff of chicken coops, chicken tractors? Of course, this will dovetail, this is part of our overall view of what we're trying to do with the 60% coverage. I mean, it's a minor portion. When we start talking, we have discussed the idea of the minimum size coop.
Right, right.
There's also should probably be a maximum size coop. That has to, is geared by the setbacks, of course.
Right, right.
But after that is what about runoff issues? I noticed in the discussion at the July 12 minutes from the city council, we talked about, they talked about a permitting system and tangentially, of course, that permitting would be if there's certain violations or something like that. Do we have runoff issues in terms of that? Should we be looking at that to what degree?
Right.
You know, I know people who have chicken tractors, don't move them enough and the grass dies and now you have an erosion problem.
That's, yeah, that's why I don't consider anything but destruction.
Okay. So really, I guess I'm looking at is, okay, where, you know, where does this set down in terms of our stormwater and lot coverage eventually?
Could be something I look at, because the Wellhead meeting last week, somebody mentioned something about where that geese were going to speed. Then we start looking at that for the MS4 in the Wellhead and the stormwater runoff.
And we have a problem with that, too.
The geese problem, so.
And they're protected, aren't they?
Well.
The Canadian geese?
You can't protect both. Okay, so all those in favor are tabling for our next meeting?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any further discussion on the requests from council? Okay. Next, we have our reports from our city planner.
I just have a couple of things for you today. We've begun a sidewalk analysis of all city sidewalks within Athens to identify the condition of them with the goal ultimately of improving the condition of sidewalks within the city. We started out with several members of the city staff, took a few hours and canvassed the west side and around the uptown area. And in the fall, I'll be continuing that with a few students who will be volunteering to complete the survey. And we have several members of the bicycle and pedestrian subcommittee from Chris Nysley's Transportation Committee of Council that are volunteering time as well. Basically, we're just going to walk every sidewalk in the city, mark them, measure them, do a subjective assessment as to their general condition, whether they're in good condition, fair, poor condition, or whether we don't have sidewalks. Then we'll map that all out and then ideally in next year, in 2011, we'll be trying to figure out a way to get those sidewalks' conditions improved, so.
Go ahead. A couple of things. One, of course, is a lot of sidewalk repair would probably either, again, it falls to property owner. If it doesn't, then an assessment process has to be taken care of. And I think the discussion I've had with the public works director is the fact that we're anticipating having the renewal of our street levy in the future. The concept there is we take some of that money with the next year's overlap, if that passes, to use it to fix the streets, because we'll have to tie up a good chunk of money if we go through the assessment process, as you know, from Carpenter Street and Stewart. I guess the other question I have is I assume you have objective criteria that you're working with? Or, you said subjective, that's what I was asking.
It is pretty subjective. There are some guidelines with how you would make an assessment. We're not going and measuring, you know, how deep is the crack or the heaving of it, but it's kind of taking, how safely can you walk on it without tripping? If you've got cracks and you've got some chunks torn out, but it's still passable, that would probably be fair. If it's just all over the place and there's trip hazards, then you're looking at something that's in poor condition. Something in good condition generally means doesn't have any cracks, it's in four-foot squares or five-foot squares, things like that, but.
Okay.
There's no easy way to get a hard, objective opinion. Once we have it all mapped out, then we would do a double check of every section before we do an assessment to really confirm what we have on our mapping.
I think.
I can say, I did a walkabout, that what we're going to find, a number of these places, particularly where the sidewalk is, as he says, heaved up, are due to our shade trees in the right of way. So there's going to be some decisions to be made. We probably ought to have the shade tree commission come in at that point as we get to that.
Maybe even earlier. I looked at this probably about when I was on council. I know that some cities actually did a 50% share with some places where the shade tree had, a tree had hauled, heaved, I guess is the term, the sidewalk up. I kind of stopped looking at it hard because one of the concerns I had is a lot of the bad sidewalks are actually brick sidewalks and I was loaded to take those out, as well as the fact that we probably should talk to the tree commission about strategies to rebuild a sidewalk by a tree to preserve the tree. And I'm not sure if there's strategies or methods, I'm sure there's methods out there of some kind, I just don't know what they are. But that's something that should be, should look at. And if it incurs an extra cost, does the city eat that cost, too? I mean, if, you know, if you say, take this, fix this sidewalk to somebody, they're going to say, I got to cut this tree down to do it. And now they're in tree commission territory. And we've just made it much harder for them to deal with the sidewalk, as well as the tree commission saying, I've got to make a choice, as you say, between, you know, water and chickens, you know, sidewalks and trees.
These are not small trees. These are not.
Oh, I know, I know. I can tell you one on North Schaefer right now, across from Stumack, it's brick. You could, it's a trip hazard right now as it stands. But the fact is it's, you know, nothing's been done, I'm sure they're taking that tree out.
Right.
And that's where it stalls at that point. The tree commission say, this is a healthy tree, find another solution.
Don't be handicapped.
Well, it's not so much that, it is a trip hazard. And I'm sure there's constructions on it. Does that tree conference occur already or, it's coming up, isn't it?
Next week, I believe.
Next week.
Ron Luke should be attending that.
Maybe that, and I think George is, too, isn't he? Maybe we should get somebody to ask those questions. Sorry to interrupt, go.
Sorry. Last week, I attended the state floodplain managers conference, the annual conference. It was a very educational experience as always, and I appreciate the opportunity to have attended that and to try to encourage better floodplain management within the city of Athens and development, so. That's all I have.
I noticed you're asking for the Survey Monkey for the natural hazard.
Yes, actually, thank you for reminding me of that. The Athens County Planning Commission is working on an update to our hazard mitigation plan. In the past, we've done separate hazard mitigation plans for each village or city, and then the county did its own for this next go-around. We are required to do this by Ohio EMA, is to have hazard mitigation plans for, as part of our, so that they will give us emergency funding when we have a hazard, a natural hazard or disaster. This year, we are doing one plan that will encompass all of Athens County, so Nelsonville, the city of Athens, and all of the villages would be incorporated into this. It's making it a lot easier for everybody involved with it because Bob Eichenberg is handling it as opposed to everybody writing their own. So there's a lot of time saving going on. There is a survey for that, that they are asking citizens to complete. It is available online, there's a link to it on the city's website, and you can also get it from the front page of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission's website. If you do a Google search for that, you can find that link. I'd encourage everybody to fill it out if they haven't done so yet. Only takes about five or 10 minutes. Thank you.
Is a question about the hazard mitigation, is the funding for that always at a county level then? I mean, by making a combined report, do you still submit your own or I guess how would?
Each village, each village or city would have to adopt the plan as a whole.
Okay, I see, so it's still.
We will be presenting that to, well, Mr. Eichenberg will be presenting that to Athens City Council.
Okay.
They'll be working on the plan in the fall of this year, ideally taking it to the villages and city councils and the county commissioners in early 2011 for adoption.
Okay. Any other questions for the panel? I think, Paul, John?
Welcome. Just wanted to let you know that a few months ago, we said we were going to re-look at the property management signs, but I put the stuff out and everybody is slowly complying and there's a few people that haven't and we're pushing that. So I don't know if we really need to discuss it a whole lot farther unless we get an organization come in and start asking about it or changing it. A few of the property managers have asked to come in, want to know if there's going to be a public hearing, but I said that they can come at any time to open an agenda at council or at the planning commission and discuss it. None of them have come, so I think we just leave it as it is and pursue it the way we are.
And if I remember, this is preventing signs and nameplates, rental signs and nameplates on R1 and R2.
And R3.
R3, okay.
I don't see the point of a public hearing.
Right, at this point, right.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a public hearing unless we do decide to change something.
Right, unless they all want to come in and request that, so.
We could have a public hearing every time we have, we start enforcing the law. That'd keep us busy, I guess. One question for you, John. Paul just mentioned the sidewalk analysis. Now, I thought there was on a checklist for the rentals, a sidewalk condition check. Is there?
Yes.
See if we call one. Is that being checked, is that being checked off on or checked?
Probably not enough.
Do they need an education on how to do this?
No, it's just, we've, what we've discussed is how to do the, you know, I've discussed this with Andy, what we do, the actual assessment, do we actually start doing it? And then if we, you have an individual homeowner that maybe can't afford it or whatever versus a rental next door, and where do we go? And I think just part of this study is what we're doing and where do we go with it, kind of get some determinations and then go from there. And, you know, at the beginning of, like I said, next year, we're going to start doing more extensive on that as far as the sidewalks and the exteriors and so on and so forth, but.
Not quite ready right now.
Right, I mean, we had talked about it, because it's $50 per day for a fence is what it is. So, and it has to be filed through the misdemeanor, through the court system and through every individual property every day, so that's what we're.
And I think the way it is written, if my memory is correct, is that if somebody says the sidewalk is not in good shape and has to be fixed, it's like a 15-day window, they have to start something up, something real short.
Yes, it's not very long, right.
Which doesn't give us the ability to actually do an assessment process either.
Right.
Before they're in violation.
So that's why I think something, the study that we started, I think, and.
Okay. Yeah, let's have that go to completion before.
Okay.
And if the code guys are doing it as part of a rental inspection, that means that they're missing all of the owner occupied, all of the business inspected, all of those in the city as well, so.
Is it something, so you aren't even going out and reviewing what the condition is? Is it basically they fill it in?
If, there's a checkbox on an inspection list that says, you know, sidewalk, other issues on the exterior, disruption, potholes in the driveway, et cetera. And, yeah, they should be putting it down.
Okay, I see.
And checking it off. But it's the, where do we go from there, sort of thing is.
Right.
It's almost like one in 90 different boxes to check off, so I can see why it falls through the cracks on that.
Yeah, well, I guess I was looking at it, could it be used as a tool for surveying what's out there as well?
But then it becomes a violation, which is, then the clock starts ticking and the violation has to be fixed.
Yeah.
And even that, if I'm reading correctly, is a contradiction between, because I think you have a 30-day window to fix a violation interior.
What I was thinking, you're saying 15, for some reason I thought it was 30 on there as well.
I'll have to check on that, okay. And again, really, we're down to nuts and bolts right at the point.
Okay. Anything to report, John?
No.
Okay. Any questions for, all right, thank you both. Opportunity for citizens to speak on other items. Okay, thank you, that opportunity is always there. Moving on, announcements and other business. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 1st, 2010, where we will continue the discussion of the chicken ordinances-esque, and any other cases that may happen. Are there other announcements? Disposition of our last meeting's minutes, which was the 2nd Wednesday of July. I was not in attendance, I will not be able to sign off on those.
I did not see anything that was amiss, so therefore I moved every except minutes.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. There's no further discussion, today's meeting is adjourned.